We are going to your return from closed session at 5:38. If you have any action on the session.
We do. I have a motion to approve. Personal request is presented by the superintendent.
Motion made by Ms. Hever, just for a second. By Mr. Owens, all in paper. Motion passes six to zero. Now we will open up for public comment. The board welcomes the public and its comments via email. We ask you to refrain from comments about any district employees without proper due process. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. In this case, Mr. Robinson will be speaking on behalf of the emails. Opinions expressed by speakers do not necessarily reflect those of the Board of Trustees or administration.
And I just got a message from Mr. Osterrecker that said the meeting volume is very low. Can barely hear it. So I guess just speak loudly when you're when you're speaking.
I don't think we need this because I'm going to speak from mine.
Okay, we have nine public comments that I will read and I'll say in advance, I appreciate all of you all very much. And I am just reading what was sent to me. And sometimes it's hard to read things that are.
Maximal.
Not kind always, so. First one from Charles McCoy. Good evening. I applaud the district's efforts this first week of school. It is a tough time for all and every district employee. Teacher, student, and family has worked together to ensure we are providing the best situation for learning for our children. It is truly the unknown for all of us, but our kids are resilient and will get through this. Virtual learning is not perfect, however, it is far better than the alternative. Returning to in-person classes during a pandemic for a virus with no treatment or vaccine is a poor decision. Only through mandated mask wearing, social distancing, and various levels of quarantine that we began to see the decreases of COVID-19 in our community. Premature return to school will only cause additional spikes in cases and put the community at risk. As a healthcare professional, we are all waiting for the premature return to school. We are all waiting for the premature return to school and to prep for surges once again to hit our area hospitals hard. We're considering a return to school on the doors, on the doorsteps of the flu season in the middle of the pandemic. March through May and through this first week, we have all seen virtual learning work. Returning prematurely without a vaccine or treatment is a poor decision. It puts the lives of your staff, their families, your students, and their families at risk. Ask yourselves, can you, one, truly socially distance in the classrooms? Can you, two, with 100% certainty, actually enforce a mask requirement? Do you, three, have supplies for disinfecting and a process to ensure it happens in between each changing class or throughout the school day? If you cannot say that, you can, with 100% certainty, you are not ready to return. Make a decision tonight that has the best interest of the community in mind. Is it really better to return only to shut down again and start over? Listen to the public, which provides feedback to you each week, and that of your faculty, which shares their concerns with you both here and directly. The stakes are high. As parents, we trust you with our children every day and applaud the efforts of your staff during difficult times. You must get this right, and the margin for error is extremely small. Thanks for your time this evening. Charles McCoy. Next one from James and Sherry Fox. To whom it may concern, I would like to plead with you to please let the children return to in-person classes if their parents want that. I know for my family that distance learning has been a struggle. We're both full-time working parents, and luckily, our daycare has done its best to accommodate our girls' needs to allow for distance learning. However, this comes at an additional cost. Our girls are signed up for after-school care, not full-time care. So each day they have to attend full-time. There are extra fees incurred. My second grader was having technical difficulties on her second day and was in tears because she could not interact with her teacher or class. She wants to learn and participate but couldn't because the technology cannot keep up with the number of kids online all the same time. My fifth grader is taking her Chromebook into lunch with her so that she doesn't miss her login time with her teacher because daycare has a schedule to keep to. As of today, there are 695 active cases in the entire county and much less than that here in Hutto. I urge you again to please let our kids return to the classroom. I also would like to thank all HISD employees and teachers for working so hard and doing an amazing job at making this as accommodating as possible. Our teachers, both last year and this year, have been very understanding and willing to work with us. We love our community and our Hippo Nation. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sherry Fox, HES parent. Next one from Will Bush. I'm appalled at the back-to-school plan, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. Our children need to be in school with their peers. No masks, no social distancing, no bathing and disinfectant. If the parents are scared, let them keep their children home. The schooling option for children staying home should not require any mandatory log-on times ever. With parents having to work and be teachers, they should be allowed to do it at their own pace. Send out the instructional videos, books, and materials for the week Monday morning. All assignments are due by Sunday evening. They can do everything at their own pace. Stop making decisions from your protected and privileged bubble. Make smart decisions that actually work for parents, students, and teachers. That's from Will Bush. This one from John Wyatt. Good day. I'll start off by saying I get the feeling this is about your teachers and not the kids. If you look at the science, there is little to no risk of children of this age contracting COVID. It is a virus that attacked weak blood vessels, and 99.9% of children have great blood vessels. But let's forget the science. Back to the teachers. These teachers do an essential job. They are responsible for teaching our children real-world problems and how to handle them. They are responsible for teaching math, science, history, arts, and writing. They are responsible for doing this in person, all caps, as in person is essential for a child's development. If your teachers are afraid for their safety, then they should be replaced by people who will do their essential, all caps, job in person. If people can sack groceries in person, then people can teach in person. Get over yourselves. Now to the kids, a child's social and mental development depends strongly on being around friends in person in a classroom setting. Since most of you have children, you also know this in your hearts. Thanks, John Wyatt. This one from James Fox. Please return to normal in-person schooling as soon as possible. This environment is not conducive to proper learning. Multiple interruptions, connection losses, distractions, and an inability to provide one-on-one teaching throughout the class. There is no blanket approach to teaching children, which is why this approach will fail our students. The strain placed on care providers attempting to help the students and parents losing more income, missing work to help the students has created an unsustainable environment to properly care for these children. While the current situation is difficult and the fear surrounding it is understandable to a point, we are making the situation worse with this approach. Children need social interactions and direct personal attention in order to learn. This approach also does not provide a path for practical application of the ideas and concepts they are attempting to retain. It is important to note that our teachers are working extremely hard to provide the best environment possible within these confines and should be commended for their heroic effort. If you haven't already, please reference the CDC recommendation for resuming in-person learning as soon as possible. And he provided a link. The risk of transmission is lower for adolescents. For those that do contract the virus, the severity is significantly milder. From the CDC website report, quote, "Children appear to be at lower risk for contracting COVID-19 compared to adults. While some children have been sick with COVID-19, adults make up nearly 95% of reported COVID-19 cases. Early reports suggest children are less likely to get COVID-19 than adults. And when they do get COVID-19, they generally have a less serious illness. As of July 21, 2020, 6.6% of reported COVID-19 cases and less than 0.1% with COVID-19-related deaths are among children and adolescents less than 18 years of age in the United States." Close quote. I understand and am empathetic to the original intent of this approach. We are all trying to take the best approach to deal with the multiple complexities of this situation. However, after one week, it is clear we must begin to return to normal functioning environment. I urge you to please consider whether this method is in the best interest of the teachers, parents, and students. Thank you very much for listening. James Fox. Next one from Dominique Severson. Hello, I'm writing with my concerns of the virtual learning and us working parents. This has become extremely difficult to do. I have two kids, one in first grade and one in ninth grade. With my first grader, I have to sit with her for the hours of 8:25 to 3:00 p.m. because she needs constant help since she cannot read and doesn't know how to work a computer. And my ninth grader is special education and doesn't understand or know what the teachers are asking of him. So I have to put it all into layman's terms for him. I work days and nights, so whenever I am not working, that is my only time to do things like grocery shop and do appointments and stuff. My son is getting nine different assignments a day, and we are being told that if these things aren't done by 11:59 or 4:00 p.m., then he will get a zero. And on top of the schoolwork, there is P.E. every day and art and music. Not to mention, most of the sites aren't working, and there's nothing we can do about that. I have had to come home late from work and still have to finish up schoolwork with my kids till 11 at night just for us to have to turn around and wake up at 8:00 a.m. to be present by 8:25. This is unacceptable. Why can't we just have all nine classes give a project to do, big or small, on Monday and have it due by Friday? That way, I can have adequate time to help my kids and still take care of my obligations and and not be so rundown. We can't have all nine classes to give a project to do, big or small, on Monday and have it due Friday. That way, I can have adequate time to help my kids and still take care of my obligations and not be so rundown. Who really has this much time to spend on school besides stay-at-home parents? This is a nightmare, and you all need to do better. Us parents are not teachers. Half of us don't even know what to do. Please, please tell the schools to dial back on the assignments. This is way too much. I have enough to deal with and do by myself, and now you guys are adding on seven hours of school. Stop, please, or at least be a bit more lenient with due dates. One assignment given Monday and due Friday, we'll get the lesson across. Thank you. Dominique Severson. Next one from Samantha Honeycutt. To whomever this may concern, please do not extend virtual learning. I understand the concerns about the virus. However, this is not the only thing causing concern about the health of children, parents, and staff. Parents are spending more on daycare or cannot go to work because of huge financial hardship, which is leading to stress. The lack of having communication with peers their own age is leading to stress. Children are being taught and helped with schoolwork by people who have no idea what they are doing. This has changed since I was in school 10 years ago. This is hurting our children and their ability to function in our future society. Precautions can be taken to slow the spread of this virus, but the lack of knowledge and the use of fundamental important behaviors cannot be rectified if it continues through the school year. My daughter and many other children are just now starting to learn how to communicate and function around other people. They are missing out of a huge part of learning outside of curricular studies. Thank you. From Shannon Probe. Good afternoon. I'm writing to express my opinion about students, faculty, and staff returning to on-campus learning after Labor Day. I am actually genuinely confused as to how it is even a discussion whether to fully reopen schools. I don't mean that to be highly critical. I'm thinking of the rate of transmission in March when schools were empty for the remainder of the year. COVID-19 case rates in our local, state, and national communities have only gotten significantly higher and more dangerous, so why would it make sense to open schools wholly now? I understand that the American Academy of Pediatrics has pushed for a safe reopening of schools, and I agree that a safe reopening would be best. However, I also look at the data and recognize that both a full and safe reopening is not possible at this time. If schools are to allow an in-person option after Labor Day, this should be done at a very limited capacity, and teachers and staff should be able to decide whether they feel safe enough to physically return to campus. Additionally, masks should be required, no different from any other component of a dress code, and they should be required to be worn properly, covering mouth and nose. We are in the midst of unprecedented times, and the lives of the members of our community are not worth us hastily deciding that things will probably be okay when we have evidence to the contrary. I know this is not an easy situation to navigate. Your job is not easy, but I'm pleading with you to err on the side of the caution when nearly 200,000 Americans have died while schools were closed. We will never get those lives back. Thank you for taking the time to hear from the public and taking our thoughts and the evidence in front of us into consideration. Best, Shannon Probe. Last one from Liz Taylor. To the Hutto ISD Board of Trustees in regards to the agenda items, item discussing extending virtual learning beyond September 4. I urge the board to protect our students, teachers, and community by delaying an in-person return to school by at least two more weeks. I feel September 4 is too soon for a safe reopening, considering the current rate of community transmission of COVID-19 in Williamson County and the surrounding area. A premature risk, a premature return risks the health and safety of our students, teachers, families, and community members. In addition, staying virtual as long as possible could lessen the disruption and instability imposed on each child and each family that would come from reopening and reclosing facilities as COVID-19 spreads through the schools. Once schools do return to in-person education, whether on September 4 or preferably later, I would still urge the board to keep as many people virtual as possible while COVID-19 positivity rates are still significant. This measure could make returning to school safer for those students and staff who really need to be there. Finally, please don't put the teachers and staff into a position, into a position where they feel they must return to a full classroom or leave their jobs. We need every teacher we have. We need them to be safe and supported, and we need them to feel safe and supported. I'm calling on you as the board to pave the way for any teacher to remain virtual who wants to do so with no fear of consequences. Don't make our teachers choose between their lives and their livelihoods. On a personal note, my son is a student at Veterans Hill Elementary, and I've been consistently impressed and humbled by how much every single member of staff there cares about students and how hard they work to support every single kid in the school. I'm not someone who usually speaks out like this, but our teachers and staff give so deeply of themselves over and over again that I feel compelled to add my voice and call in for consideration of their safety as we navigate this pandemic. Thanks so much for your time. Sincerely, Elizabeth Taylor.
All right. So before we get started with six, item six A on the agenda, I have some personal things that I wanted to share. And if anybody else on the board wants to share briefly about our current situation, you can, and then we'll get started with six A. So decisions like this, the one we're making tonight, do not have meaning. COVID-19 has changed the course of our lives and impacted people's health, people's livelihood, and for us and Hutto ISD, our most prized possessions and our staff and students. Every time a decision has to be made, especially as it affects those two populations, it is met with heartache, loss of sleep, and wrestling because we desire to do the right thing in the best and safest interest of our people. And we know that for some, it will never feel right because of the way it personally affects them. Our administration is tasked with serving over 1,000 staff and nearly 200 students, and they have worked tirelessly to make certain our staff has what they need to educate and that our students have what they need to learn, whether it's virtually or in person. I think we can all agree that what you hear on the news source one day may be in complete contrast to another day or a different news source depending on the way it's presented. To the administration, thank you for your countless hours of investing in plans, ordering supplies, changing routes, communicating intentions and facts as they relate to our district since the day this all started way back during spring break. To the staff, thank you for meeting less than desirable conditions head-on and for pressing on in creative and innovative ways all for the best interest of your students, whatever and however that looks. You are important to us. We read every email. We hear your concerns and fears. We're thankful for your suggestions, encouragement, and thoughts. We care about them, and we care about you. To the parents, thank you for offering your concerns, your feedback, your encouragement, your grace, and flexibility as we mold and shape education in the middle of what continues to be a pandemic in our nation. We know this isn't easy on you, and we understand. We have families and children facing the same circumstances. Your children are important to us. We read every one of your emails. We hear your concerns and fears, and we do care about them. And to the students of Hutto ISD, thank you for waking up, logging on, interacting with your teachers and classmates, doing your assignments, asking for help, and investing in yourselves, even though this may not be an ideal environment. You are important to us. Your education is important to us. Your mental and physical health is important to us. And while we have this discussion tonight and make decisions based on all of that, we realize that there is no answer that will meet the needs of 100% of the people 100% of the time in the face of this situation. So thank you all. Thank you to our staff, and thank you to our students and parents. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Sorry.
I'd like to say something really quick if I could. Just to kind of augment your thoughts and to share, I know our appreciation as a whole from the board and our appreciation for the community, the teachers, the staff, the administration, all of the folks that have put in so much work. You're right. I think that there is no good answer, and we can't tell the future. And in the absence of understanding or knowing exactly what's going to happen, the only thing left to do is prepare as much as possible. And I really believe wholeheartedly that we as a district have done everything that we can to prepare. And I want to give credit to the teachers, the staff, the administration, the people that have put in just a ton of hours, putting the resources in place and planning, trying to interpret data from different sources at different times. It's trending in different ways. I think it's been, it's probably fair to say it's been an impossible task to come up with a cogent plan that works for everyone. I'm always touched when I talk to parents that, you know, are concerned, teachers that are concerned for their safety, for their student's safety. It's obviously sincere. We understand that. I don't accept the premise, and I never will, that some people are less concerned about safety than others. I think that we're all concerned primarily about the safety of our students and our staff and our teachers and our community. So no one more than the staff who's in the classroom every day with the teachers, with the students. And, you know, conversely, there's a lot of parents, and we heard some of those stories tonight, who are equally concerned. And I know that we've shared that concern as well as a board and as administrators and the staff about students not coming back to school, right? Not coming back to that learning environment and the burden that it puts on their progression, the burden that it puts on the parents. We can use different data points to support different arguments about why we should or should not come back and when. But again, in the absence of knowing for certain what's going to happen, the best thing that we can do is prepare to the fullest extent possible with as many resources as possible. And I feel confident that we've done that. And that's not, you know, that's tough because I think your comments there, Billy, mentioned that everyone, I don't remember the exact terminology you used, but everyone has a personal opinion based on their own circumstance, really. And our job is to just understand and listen and support and plan and have something available to pivot if we have to. So really, all I wanted to do is just augment what you, everything that you just said. Acknowledge the difficulty of this entire process. And more than anything, thank every single person who has put in so many hours and so much effort into caring, thinking, planning, executing everything that we're trying to do to keep our students safe. I just think it's been an incredible unprecedented effort. And we won't know anything until this thing gets rolling, but I think we're ready. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
I'm going to take it a different direction. I'm not going to augment what they've said. I'm going to say that I find it frustrating that people aren't taking a look at all the work that's been done behind the scenes, that people are not realizing that it's not 100% one way or the other. I think that it's short-sighted to feel like any one person knows the answer. But if you look at the manpower and the intellect and the research that's gone into creating a plan, I think you could see that we're trying to take into account everybody. I've never once heard that every student has to be back in person. I've never heard that every student has to remain virtual. I think that we're not looking that there's possibly combinations here that are being offered up. And I just find it frustrating that people try to shame and bully and intimidate. And I don't think that that's the way to get your point across.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, can you bring up the presentation?
I can.
Can you present? Can you present? Go up at the top where it says view. If you hit, you didn't present.
What do you want me to present? I'm not prepared to present.
Because I don't think I can do it from here.
I got you.
Yeah, no, I can't.
Yeah, I will move as you tell me to move.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Madam President, members of the board. What I'd like to do before we take action on the agenda item regarding the extension of virtual instruction, I would like to go through an instructional safety plan update. And as we've said many times before, this plan is not created or put together by one person. It is a whole lot of team members coming together and being a part of this entire effort to launch school, to carry on with virtual instruction, and then look at what is the safest way to return in person. So as a reminder to everyone, can you hit enter? Second.
It wasn't moving.
Okay, there you go. So for our board and the entire public, so this is, these are the decision-making markers. So these are the areas that we look at in order to make a decision whether to stay virtual or return to in-person instruction. And I think, Dr. Schumacher, are the numbers still pretty much at 42 and 58%? Okay, so we still have roughly 42% of our students selecting virtual instruction, 58% selecting in-person instruction. So the first piece that we look at, which is the biggest and which is the piece that we're going to spend the most time on today, are the availability of countermeasures. So if we return to in-person, what do we have in place to create safe environments for both children and for staff to be safe? So that's PPE, which is personal protective equipment, our safety protocols, our safety planning, transportation, how we're going to serve meals. Do we have enough learning devices for all of the children that are at home? All of those pieces. So we've covered a lot of these in previous meetings, but we'll go through each of those categories just to see where we are as of today, August 21. Then we're going to, then we look at some of the hardcore data that relates to the health conditions of our county. So we look at the COVID-19 cases in Williamson County, and the goal here is that we want to be trending in the single digits. Doesn't mean that we, that we wait until we're in the single digit, but that the data is trending in that direction. Because remember, we're making these decisions in two weeks before we actually bring the children in person. Then the second marker is the percentage of COVID-positive hospitalization rates and the ICU and the general beds that are used in hospitals. So how many of the beds are taken up? And then what are the hospitalization trends, both in ICU and in general beds? And we want this, of course, number four, those hospitalization trends. We want those trending toward 50%. And then number five, the COVID positivity rates. The goal here The goal here is to see that positivity rate at 5% or trending in that direction. Then the very last one, we review the guidance provided by our local health authorities. We never proceed without that, we always have it handy, and we participate in weekly meetings with them. They're really good about providing us updates as well. So, we'll come back to these decision markers toward the end of the presentation. All right, so our current status, obviously, our campus-based staff reported to work on the 6th. We began remote learning on the 18th. We're monitoring health conditions lately. We've established a PPE, Personal Protective Equipment Inventory Distribution and Replenishing Protocols. Now, that doesn't mean that we're at the point where we have everything where it needs to be, but we have a system for making sure that we get there. We're monitoring enrollment numbers and class sizes, leveling is starting to happen behind the scenes. Just as another point of reference, we had a phone conference this week with Templeton Demographics. And while our enrollment yesterday was at 8180, do we have a number for today, Dr. Sharmadi? Okay, so yesterday, we closed today at 8180. Our projected enrollment was at 8500, and even though we never hit enrollment projection on the first day, it's usually several months out. So, the fact that we're at 8180 is a good sign. But our demographers did tell us that house closing data is off the charts. It's actually higher than it was last year, and so we anticipate the children showing up at some point.
For our fact, we have 1,400 new home starts versus what we projected of 1,000, and it's going to be historical, it's going to be historical to figure.
Yeah. And then, of course, we've continued with extracurricular activities before and after school. Knock on wood, I hate to even jinx this, but you know, Coach Lohman is extremely proud that we've been able to keep our athletes safe and we have not had to report positive cases in that arena. So, so on Tuesday, when virtual instruction started, we all kind of chuckled about how long it was going to take us to get to work because it was the first day of school, and we thought we were going to, you know, we talked about the imaginary traffic jams. So, today, Mr. Gideon provided lunch for our technology crew because they have been working just incredibly long hours behind the scenes. They've been working nonstop all summer. All of our rooms have new equipment, teachers have new equipment, I mean, just getting Chromebooks out. And so, I was in the technology area, and they've got TV screens all over the place. And I saw a set of data like this, and I asked Mr. Reynolds, "So, what does that data indicate?" And boy, all I had to do was ask the question, and they went to town. He says, "That's our internet traffic." And I said, "Oh, really?" And so, what this traffic indicates, this is traffic in Hutto during the first week of school. So, since we couldn't talk about real traffic, I just wanted to infuse this, it's something to make you smile. So, what the blue colors indicate, that's the data from our teachers, that's the data going out. So, on Monday, obviously, not a whole lot going out, but the green are all the kids using the internet, right? Using their devices. So, you saw on Monday, kids were testing it out, getting ready. And whoa, look what happened on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They went to town. And obviously, the green is bigger than the blue because we have 8100 kids versus a little over 600 teachers. But anyhow, I just wanted to share this with the public out there. This was our traffic problem, and it really wasn't a problem. It was the traffic on the first week of school. What Mr. Reynolds indicated to me was that this is a very healthy pattern. It is that he says, "If we have more than enough capacity to handle the kids if they were all to come back, because we're not even near a quarter of our use." So, and he was really thanking the district for increasing their capacity and providing new equipment. They're really excited back there because when they can be efficient, they know it's for the best interest of the kids. So, that was my happy mark.
That comes, we ended the day at 8,247.
Okay, 8,247 hippos.
Which is 241 when the first day of school is over.
Yeah. So, we had quite a few kids in registration queue that obviously have come online. Okay, can we go back one slide?
Well.
Can you hit back?
Can I go back?
There. Just as a point of reference, and I'm going to read all those to you, but that's always a question from staff and always a point of curiosity, "Well, what is everybody else doing?" So, if there were changes, I kind of put it in parentheses. Everybody's kind of in adjustment mode right now, but this is the latest information I have as of today. But everybody's looking at data and making adjustments accordingly. Obviously, a lot of our neighboring districts are in Travis County. They're under a totally different set of orders from their health officials, and their data looks completely different from ours. So, but just as a point of reference, this is what the rest of the districts are doing. Okay, staff considerations. And I'll probably ask Mr. Gideon to pop in with some of these. We've delivered sanitation supplies to campuses, initial par stark is of the 21st. This is an ongoing delivery, so I can't tell you today with full confidence that 100% of the classrooms have their PPE, but we're definitely working toward that goal so that we can confidently be able to come back within the next week or two and say, "All right, we've got all of our classrooms stocked and ready to go for the first couple of weeks of school, and we have enough in inventory to replenish." So, remember, I talked earlier about having a way to distribute and a way to replenish. And so, that is currently underway.
What are the items in the PPE? What does that mean?
So, generally speaking, I'll stand up slightly. Each teacher will have, at times during the year, the product may look different, but essentially, they're going to have spray bottles that'll have an alcohol-based sanitizer that they can use to not only spray their desks down, but the children who will be enlisted to help wipe their areas with paper towels will also be getting their hands sanitized. So, it's a dual-purpose type of sanitary item that may be in classroom. They'll also have boxes or barrels of what we call wipes. Those will have a product called Saniqu in them. They're really a convenience wipe for the teacher, although the students can use them as well to wipe surfaces like laptops and so on and so forth. We will provide hand sanitizer, those items along with vinyl gloves and wipes and one other product are already in all the classrooms minus the high school. The high school will get its shit list next week. Additionally, we will have on the campus pediatric, as well as adult paper masks for those that forget their masks in school. There will be bulk hand sanitizer, bulk sanitary agents that can be used either by the teachers from their replenishing stock or distributed around the campus. We have, of course, all the natural stuff that we would normally have, soap water, hand dispensers, and so on and so forth. Those are constantly being filled and stocked. The face shields have been distributed to the campuses and ready to be given to the teacher. I know that some campuses have already given out face shields for those teachers that wish to wear them. Similarly, we will be doing the buses the same way. We'll treat the buses similar to a classroom environment so that that driver has access to some PPE as well as sanitizing supplies during, you know, before, during, and after the route.
As far as janitorial services, is there anything extra that we might want to add?
All their procedures now are enhanced. So, with your approval a month or so ago of me being able to hire 10 additional housekeepers, we're technically down two permanent hires, and we have multiple candidates in the queue for HR's processes. Something that's delaying us has nothing to do with our ability to recruit, but it has to do with the fingerprinting. But we feel like by the time we go back to in-person, then we'll be fully staffed with 10 additional housekeepers. Those 10 will allow us to swing additional help to the daytime. And the enhanced cleaning and sanitizing that I've talked about often with you guys will include the electrostatic backpacks from WANDs that'll be used during the day. All of those, by the way, have been distributed. I don't want to speak with certainty, but I believe most of the staff and principals who are going to be given that type of piece of equipment have also received training on it. Fundamentally, it's responsible to the custodians to do the primary heavy lifting with those electrostatic cleaners, but we have given the PE teachers, for example, an electrostatic backpack so that after they've had a PE class, they can hit the basketballs, for example, with the wand. The athletic department has been given five of those as well. And there's a whole lot of other special cause, PPE and other things that we're going to deploy. I think the last time we met, you may not have been made aware, but we are providing some special face masks to our instrumentals that allows them to wear masks and play their instruments. In addition, they are going to be given bell covers. These were designed, or I think that the idea came up at the University of Arizona for their marching band department and the Texas Music Educators Association and lots of other music groups have endorsed these products so that marching bands and concert bands can have an extra level of protection that's beyond just what the kids are going to come to school prepared to do. Our vocal artists, our theater theorists are going to also get face shields so they can act and sing and still be able to do performances. So, those are some examples of some little nuances that we're going to have throughout the district. We've ordered 1,400 plastic sneeze guards for cafeterias, probably another 1,000 special acrylic shells of different types of applications that the principals requested. So, the ideas are continuing, and we're continuing to locate supplies and resources to be able to help our teachers out. So, those are just a few examples.
Hey, Glenn, is that one of those items or a separate line item, or are they just kind of out of general funds?
Well, they're out of the general fund, but we are coding them separately.
Okay.
To track them.
Okay.
So, we can get reports and reimbursement.
And where's that reimbursement going to come from?
Mine's different sources.
Okay.
We've submitted an application today for our SRF funds. Well, I'll take that back, we'll submit it next week. We have a meeting with...
Can you stand up, Mr. Robinson, because your voice needs to go.
Okay. And we had a meeting this past week with Williamson County Treasurer because they have received some relief funds, CRF funds. And the Commissioners' Court in Williamson County is trying to determine what allocation will go to school districts. And so, we've kind of been tasked with that. We've also applied for some Medicaid reimbursements. Last month, we did that, so there are things in the pipeline. We have not received any of those funds yet, but they are in the pipeline.
Care's funds also are available for reimbursement as well, right?
That's what you were talking about from Williamson County.
Okay.
We've, y'all allocated an extra $250,000 to housekeeping over the $200,000 that we have generally achieved. We're down to $181,000 in that fund, and that will be what will be pulled into the possible reimbursements. But keep in mind, a lot of our board is, we won't need to expend any of that because we part the purse, so. But we're keeping track of it.
Thank you. So, as far as staff considerations, our professional development, when the staff reported on the 6th, there was a lot of, I think the principals did an outstanding job of providing ample opportunities for virtual PD. And right now, the staff are on choice for delivering instruction. They can either deliver it from their classrooms or they can deliver it from home if they have the ability to do so. Other staff considerations, we are looking at exploring ways to assist teachers with childcare. Should children be in virtual school in another school district? So, when we return to in-person, if a teacher has children in another district who are not yet in-person, obviously, we're going to continue to allow them to bring the children to school with them. But Henry and I are also going to reach out to YMCA. Our principals are going to take a poll to see how many children we actually have on the different campuses. And if this is something that we can work out with YMCA, we'll do that. So, that's in the works because we know that's coming just because of, you saw the different districts and all the different schedules, and everybody's going to end up tweaking it in some way. So, we are not going to be aligned, no possible way to be aligned. So, we have to be ready to support our teachers with their own children. And we do have a staff screening tool, became available this week. We figured out how it worked on Skyward. It's really easy, we didn't have to buy anything, it's already available. And we're going to work with HR on getting screenshot instructions and getting that out to the staff. So, we do have a screening tool where we're able to generate quick reports every morning of who's not had a positive screening and then act accordingly. Okay, so, we also administered a staff survey, and we just picked out some of the key questions. So, one of the questions here, "How confident are you with the district's return to school safety plan?" And then, of course, if they weren't familiar with it, we gave you the link. But you see the results there, 27.7% very confident with safety measures that are in place but waiting to see their full implementation. 52% somewhat confident. We have 18% that were not confident, and then we had a few that offered no opinion. The next question was, "Please indicate your level of agreement with the following statements." The first set of data is, "I've been trained in the district's safety plan." And so, you can see the majority of the responses were strongly agree or agree. The second one was, "I have a thorough understanding of my responsibilities with regard to the safety plan." The third set of data, "The district has been responsive to my health accommodation needs." And most agreed, and then some no comment or wasn't applicable. And then the very last one, which we heard about last week with the public comment, "My classroom area has sufficient supplies for PPE." So, we know that that's an area that we're continuing to work on. The next data question was, this question is for teachers or staff involved with delivering instruction only. So, the first set of data was, "I have a solid understanding of the instructional planning expectations for remote learning." Again, mostly in the strongly agree area. But when I was reading through the free response comments, there's still quite a few folks who would like some additional time for planning and additional training with Seesaw and Google Classroom, and Canvas in particular. And one comment that sticks out to me was, "I know we learned Google Classroom in the spring, but it was my first time to use it, I really need to get better with that before I add some other layers." So, the next question was along the same lines. "My technical skills are strong, and I feel confident about my ability to deliver remote instruction." Obviously, we've got a lot of strong talent in the district, but there are folks who still need some additional assistance. And then the very last one, of course, speaks specifically to Seesaw, Google Classroom, and Canvas. So, from these, it's important to really look at some of those individual responses and then figure out where it is that folks need some additional support. All right, moving on to our parent considerations. Obviously, we've had our virtual meet-the-teacher nights. We're providing breakfast and lunch at all of the campuses. That started this week. All kids, as a reminder to everyone listening, especially our parents, remember children, everyone in Hutto receives a free breakfast. Lunch is for qualifying students only or for those who wish to pay, but that's available. YMCA is serving 46 kids. Our principals are doing a super job with the campus safety videos. And you know what was interesting, in the very last one, we received rave reviews on the district-wide Welcome Back video. So, lots of kudos to Todd and Cassie for putting that together. And the email messages on the first day of school were really, normally on the first day of school, Dr. Sharmadi and I just brace ourselves for the communications, right? Transportation didn't go well, or somebody didn't get to eat that day, somebody's schedule is messed up. And really, the majority of our communications were all along the positive side. Just the, really, the extra effort that our teachers went through to make that virtual connection. Just the, really the extra effort that our teachers went through to make that virtual connection meaningful. And I know I spent a good chunk of my morning on the first day at Howard Norman, and those teachers were just rocking it, did a fabulous job. It was fun to see the setups that they created in their classrooms to meet their children. So I know the parents are appreciative of that. And just so you know, back to the YMCA, when Mr. Graham and I met with the Williamson County Treasurer this week, the county, Williamson County, received $93 million from the CARES funding. And they allocated $750,000 specifically to the YMCA. And Brian Spence, our main contact for the care that we're providing for our kiddos, he told us that the majority of the children, of those 46 children, are on scholarships. So the money is going back to our families. And I know a couple of the public comments talked about that we'll reach out to those parents and let them know that YMCA is available. And I know I walked into the cafeteria on the first day on Howard Norman, and those YMCA folks were right there with the kids, trying to help them log on and provide that assistance. So I think we need to just let our parents know that that service is available. Technology device distribution efforts, I won't go through all of those bullets, but right now, 6,100 student Chromebooks have been out. All of the hotspots are out. We've ordered 100 more. All of the staff have new Windows laptops. We've even provided Chromebooks to our parent professionals and our aides so they can support our kiddos. And a lot of those aides are in special education. That one parent on the public comment with the special education child, we need to make sure that there's somebody available to help for a child. We need to make sure that that's going to happen. Tech support is awesome. Our transportation people right now are everywhere. I walk into the Hutto High School cafeteria and there are scanning documents. We have a gentleman that reports every day upstairs. He's scanning documents too. I walked into the tech area today. A couple of them are helping out with the tech support chat rooms. Angela Harke was there, a couple of our librarians were there. So it's all hands on deck. And I think David told us, I don't know how many chat requests they have answered, but it's in the hundreds a day where they're online, helping our families. And I think that's what's made the virtual rollout that much smoother because.
Yeah, I think through lunch, we talked to him, it was about 450 in two days.
Yeah.
And the key to that is not, is to stay in front of the parent that's trying to get through. And even if we can't answer that question on the phone, we've got somebody that's taking a message down, reassuring that someone will call them back. But fortunately, between, we have great library pairs and Angela helping them. They're able to answer a lot of these questions that our parents and our students have, and it never makes its way into a whirl in particular.
Instructional plan updates, Dr. Sramani, do you want to speak to anything about that area in particular?
Exhausting. I was the new teacher, excuse me. Now, we're just going through another round of balancing the classes now that we know how many students are there. So I'm working, I'm working with Lisa Patterson and the E O T on Monday to start figuring out. As kids came in and some kids didn't show up, we need more virtual sections here. We need less over here, so we're going to have to go back to staffing. I spent all afternoon talking to principals about what needs to be switched. And I guess the only thing along those lines, one oddity, I face oddity, that the Hutto Middle School is way over projected numbers already, and they're the only one. Hutto High School is moving closely to their projection, which means we're trying to get ahead of that one. And Hutto Elementary School, of all the campuses, everyone decided to move to the one we just tore down. So Henry and I were talking with a, about how to fit people and find more space for kiddos at the campus. Just I think one little note, I ordered a Friday report, I just tickled it. We're now enrolling on a district transfer from other states. They're not here.
Wow.
And luckily, we have a contact at T E A named Jamie Buffalo, which certainly, we can still get funding for those.
Yes. But I think also for all of our families who are listening, remember that if you need, if you're waiting for that hotspot or your connectivity and hope is not as fast or as strong as you'd like it to be, our secondary cafeterias are available. You can come up and sit in the high school or the little school cafeterias, and you can work there and have access to the internet. So the how-to videos for parents in English and Spanish, those are available, ready to go online as well. Actually, what I have, I follow a lot of those videos. Instructional technology team is amazing. All right, HR, and I know I saw Mrs. Patterson is online, so she's available in case we've got any questions. But the big point, the big piece here is that our non-attend staff, those folks, all have temporary assignments in conjunction with campus and departments. So we really appreciate, I'm going to do a big shout out to our transportation folks in particular and all of our hourly staff who took on an alternative assignment. They've just done a fabulous job for us. And on the backend, they're going to save the district just thousands of dollars in labor that we would have had to have contracted out. So just a reminder, we're requiring additional COVID training for all staff. We have an addendum in our handbook for anything COVID accommodation request. I know that was a question you all had. We have 44 that includes alternative work assignment requests. There are eight cases, and they updated this this morning, that are still pending action or require closure. As far as COVID-related cases among our staff, we have two active confirmed cases. We have four people that are exhibiting symptoms and are in isolation. We have five people that have been exposed to someone who was positive. This did not at work, but outside of work, and so they're in isolation. And then a question you all had last week was, how many resignations have we had due to illness or COVID concerns? There's 11 right now.
What is our contact tracing?
So I, we discussed that on Tuesday with our safety team meeting. So right now, the process, Amy Huddleston in HR with Kendra Estes's help. She does all of the adult, all of the staff contact tracing. Once we return to in-person instruction, Mrs. Estes and all the school nurses will conduct contact tracing. Yep. Mrs. Patterson, is there anything else you want to add? I can see you at the bottom of the screen.
I just wanted to say about the alternative assignments. I think Henry hit on it earlier, but you've seen people around in different positions in technology, in central office. We have two ladies here in human resources, and it's just wonderful to have them working with us. And as you said, cutting down on some of the expense, but also giving them options to continue their income while we're in the remote setting. So it's worked out perfectly, and we were able to find assignments for everyone. So very exciting news.
Any questions, Bernard? All right, more operations. This is kind of Mr. Gideon's show because so much of our safety plan revolves around operations. And again, we're not going to read all of those to you, but just some highlights. Henry, if you want to go through the picnic tables.
Certainly, I answered a lot of these questions a little bit earlier. These are some of the other new onestones that we're purchasing. As a reminder, picnic tables, in addition to folding tables and lots of chairs that are being brought in. We'll give some of our campuses the ability to do some creative things with alternative feeding sites. The rest of those items I mentioned earlier, they kind of speak for themselves. I also mentioned on the second page about the special face masks and bell covers. There is the number of the special purpose placing glass shields that have been purchased along with what we're buying for the cafeterias. Replacement kits for the water fountain should be here in time to swap those out. This will allow our kids to bring bottles to school and their literally bottle with pillars. We also have a backup plan to provide temporary water for our kids if we can't get to those for whatever reason. And then we've ordered over 72 epitization units. These are for the areas where I don't have the fresh air controls like I do in some of the main buildings. So like in portable buildings or in small rehearsal suites, we can go in and do something similar to what we do with our fresh air handling systems in those small, tight and confined areas. The third page, I mentioned about our custodial staffing and what we stand there. There's a little update on the renovations projects. Pretty much by the end of next week, the renovations will essentially all be done with some minor finishes. These are the legacy campuses and what we've disturbed at H E S that will need to be reoccupied before school starts. There may be a few things that we'll do after hours, mainly swapping out light fixtures. And we have some long lead items that are delayed, but it should not hamper when we return to in-person school at all. And we're ready to rock and roll at the moment's notice to get our libraries back into gear. Get our librarians plenty of help, again, from some of our transportation staff so we can get the collections back in order before in-person school resumes. That's all on the calendar and slated to come up pretty quickly. And we slide over into transportation. This is a new slide that hasn't been presented, but I thought y'all might want to know today where we are on transportation. Beginning Monday, a parent letter will be distributed via email, kind of pointing us to the website containing bus registration, what our cleaning procedures are, what our safety procedures are, and tips for parents to help prioritize their studies with the bus. If a parent has an Easy Rider account, now I'm being told by the riders that the parent can go online and see their route. What we're really wanting to stress to parents is. Is to check your bus information, but check constantly. While the bus number and the stop may not change, the times may swing on us. So as we get closer to an in-person decision, bus routing will be something that parents are going to want to focus in on. Again, we're limiting capacity on these buses. Students shall wear masks at all times while on the bus. Drivers will wear gloves, masks, face shields. They have their own protocols for cleaning buses. How they're going to include sanitation in their pre-trip and their post-trip and between the routes. Because it's a different environment than the learning environment. But we've got a pretty good plan in place for that. I won't go into any of the details there. We talked about ventilation. We've added 15 drivers this summer, not added to our cohort of drivers, but over the course of replacing. We've lost 13, which some of them have gone on to other districts for, because of underlying health concerns. They've decided that they want to go do something else different. So I'm preparing, David is preparing for the reality that when we do go to in-person school, we may have some difficulty covering our bus routes. It may mean that we modify some of the bus stop times and we do a couple of double shops. We go into a neighborhood, pick up a section of kids, run them to school, and go right back out during that elementary run to pick up kids in order to get them there in time. That may mean earlier bus rides for some parents. And we'll try to avoid anything that's outrageous. Like we have some youngsters out in Jonah and out in the hinterlands that get on the bus early. Those children would not be affected. This is really the close-in routing where we can efficiently go into a subdivision and really capture a group of kids, get them to school and run right back out there so we're not delaying on our secondary routes. Dr. Thomas and I both have been talking about this. We may also be asking parents that in some cases, if you are able to consider transporting your own child, even though you're entitled to bus service or you're allowed bus service, if you're able to do that, we may have to have that help to minimize our capacity. Some parents may do that on the court because they don't want the capacity concerns in terms of social distancing. But the reality is, I'll probably tell parents every day of the week, safest way to school is on a school bus, period. And it cuts down the traffic in our community in the mornings. We may need the parent help when it comes to the start of school. So be advised that that is something that we will mark going forward.
Yeah, because otherwise, the children will be either delayed or even in the afternoons. It may take longer to get the children home. So at some point, we're still a couple of weeks out, but that's more than likely something we'll start publicizing that the parents can help us get the kids to school until we can get one, get fully staffed. And then the other piece is whenever we can put more children on the bus safely because we're trying to create distance on the bus. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gideon. Right, the next piece, and I know, is Mrs. Estes online?
She was.
She was?
She was earlier.
Okay, I know she's in.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Just wanted to know, just in case we need to tap your brain, thank you for being with us. So out of all the guidance, both Kendra and I agree, out of all the guidance that Williamson County has provided, this is the one graphic that really strikes me as one that we can promote because these are the key personal behaviors to safety. It's the wearing of the mask, it's the social distancing, the disinfecting, and then, of course, hand washing. And if we can really hone in on those four key personal behaviors, you can see that you can stop the spread of the virus. So again, once we can get some one-on-one time, face time with our kids, these are the four key personal behaviors that are just, that's going to be our drumbeat for the entire school year. All right, health and safety considerations. Kendra, do you want to go through this, Mrs. Estes?
Yes, sure. First, I would like to just take a moment to thank a couple people. You know, our trustee, Mrs. Connie Gooden, Gooding, I really appreciate what you had to say in recognizing all of the members who have taken time to put in the effort, the work, the long hours to evaluate all the data. We see some of them in the board meetings, we see some of them on campuses, but it really takes everybody to put this together. And then also to our board president, Mrs. Billy Wooddude, you know, I want you to know that I feel the same way you do. We are really, really trying to look at all the data and meet the needs of all of our staff, all of our families, because we are really in this together. So this slide here, you're going to see that, you know, we've hit a plateau. We have about an average of 71 new cases a day, and that's our seven-day average, which is one of the factors that we look at as, you know, Dr. Estrada-Thomas told you in the beginning. We're looking at our positivity rate, we're looking at different things. Our positivity rate Friday was 7.96% or similar, sorry. It was 7, you know, percent. And then yesterday, it was 11.96%. So this information that we present to you guys is very dynamic. Looking at where we were a month ago, we were in a bad position. There was no way that we could have the conversation about safely opening schools. Where we are today is, if we continue to do what we're doing, we see we've kind of plateaued, but we could do better. So if we continue to do better, perhaps when it comes time to plan to open, we will be at that point. So what I have for you is simply what it is. The data is what the data is. But what I think you guys should take away from our meeting today and the presentation today is just an understanding that we are looking at everything and we are thinking about everyone. I'm actually giving this presentation from the pool where my daughter's swimming because, you know, I have a family too. I have children too. I'm invested too. We all are juggling this life. So I just want you guys to know that as much as you appreciate the work that we're doing, we appreciate the feedback that you're giving, and we're going to continue to be accountable. We want you to know that it's evidence-based and it is Hutto-specific, and we're doing what we can. So I know that was off, you know, script, and it wasn't planned for tonight, but I really felt like it needed to be said that this, in the health and safety considerations, we are considering all things, and we are controlling what we can and doing what we can, trusting that you will do the same, and we respect the trust that you give to us. So I will end with that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So I wanted to just bring attention to the third bullet, that as far as Williamson County is concerned, we are currently in that red phase, which is considered still a hotspot. So when we go to the next slide, you can see, go to the next slide. Oh, thank you. So just for everyone who's listening online to our board members here, this is a snapshot of yesterday. So today, we were waiting for the data for Friday, and at 5:00 it was still not available. I looked and it's available, that's what I was clicking on, so I can actually see today's. But as of yesterday, this is, again, the data that we look at, you see the very top off to the right under yellow, new cases yesterday on August the 20th, there were 20, 22 cases. You come a little further down, you can see the number of people that are in the hospital. You can see the percentage of Williamson County beds in use. 77% of the beds are in use. The ICU beds, 86% of the beds are in use. And then as far as the ventilators, only 19% are in use. So that's a good sign that the, there's plenty of ventilators available, because that's usually a really, really severe, severe mark. Nonetheless, the other piece of data that we look at is down there toward the left side. The key indicator, the seven-day average of new infections was at 12.15%. And then the percentage of the positivity rate, the viral tests that are positive was at 11.96. So like Kendra was saying, last Friday, a week ago today, that positivity rate had dropped to 7.9. So this week, one of the data pieces that we were, we were looking for was paying attention to that positivity rate. And instead of trending downward, it was slowly creeping up, which is not the direction we wanted to go. So if you click into the next slide, this is the one that's all encompassing, because it kind of gives you an indication of where, of where the data is. So the, the blue marker, that's an actual, just a straight count, that's the case count. Now you notice there are some significant spikes, and that's data that comes off of the weekend. So we picked up data today, but the county does not record data for Saturday or Sunday. So come Monday, when the data is recorded, you're picking up whatever was picked up on Friday and then all of the weekend data. So that's where you kind of see the, the spikes. So the new case count, you see that those numbers kind of trending, trending down. They did go up somewhat from Thursday to, well, I, online, I can actually see it because the, the case count, I'll tell you. Yeah, the case count yesterday was 22, the case count this afternoon came in at 41. Yep.
Those are new cases.
Those are new cases, yes.
They've never been tested positive before, so 44 new cases.
41 new cases today, yeah. So the numbers on Monday was 78, on Tuesday was 99, on Wednesday it was 43. Yesterday it was 22, and then today it went back up to 41. So it's a, it's a constantly moving target. Really remember what we want to see is not these up and down data pieces. We want to see the trend slowly heading in one direction. The new infection rate is the, is the red data. So you can see the, the red data was kind of stabilized and it started going up, and then it's slowly starting to come down. The positivity rate is in yellow. Now, the positivity rate data just started, they just started publicizing that on the 10th. So this is why you don't see data on the, on the 5th, 6th, or the 7th. So when I look at the Williamson County dashboard, that's when they started picking up that data. So on the positivity rate, that went on Monday, it was at 8.8. Now remember, last Friday it was at 7.9. So we come in on Monday, it's gone up to 8.8. On Tuesday, it went up to 9.9. Thursday, the Wednesday, went up to 10.9. Yesterday was 11.9. Today, it dropped slightly at 11.3. So didn't go up. Now, the good news on the hospitalization rates. On Monday, that hospitalization rate was in 75, Tuesday crept up to 77, Wednesday crept up to 78. Yesterday dropped to 77, today dropped to 75. And then ICU rates on Monday was 77, Tuesday was at 79, Wednesday at 82, 86, and then today it dropped back down to 82. So today seemed to, even though the case count was up, the hospitalization rates came down.
What's the difference between, sorry, between new case count and new infection?
Well, usually one and the same, because a new case means they've not been identified before. And a new, a new infection rate, obviously along the same lines, but that infection rate is over a seven-day average.
Infection rate?
Yes.
Per 100,000?
Yes. Yes. Just a flat number. Yeah.
So are we still in the phase of no elective surgeries to where it's the, the case, the hospitalization rate is either critical patients or COVID patients, not, you know?
So I think one of the discussions that Mrs. Estes and I were having on this hospitalization rate, that's really hard to tell, because that's, those numbers are just the hospitalization rates. I couldn't tell you that all those rates are based on COVID cases. That's everybody that's occupying that.
Right, but, but I, I know that one time the governor had cut down all, like elective surgeries and stuff like that. So at least you knew it was, you know, critical care or COVID care.
Yeah. I think, I don't know. Kendra, do you know?
My wife had elected.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say.
Somebody you know. Right. So I, I think for us, out of all the slides that are here, when you look at our decision-making markers, these are the, the data points that we must look at. And remember that the big, the big one is the positivity rate, because that's the number of tests. I can tell you that we've had one person who's taken the test three times and they tested positive three times. They're not necessarily a new case or a new infection rate, they just have not come out of the symptoms and they're still, they're still testing positive. Yep. So that, that particular rate obviously is above, is above 10 right now, and we want it trending toward that 5. So the next slide is your Epi curve. And these are your, your 14-day marks. So you can see the highest part of the Epi curve here is, and these are cases by date that are, that they're tested, and then the cases by date of onset, the, the onset of the symptoms. So they could, they kind of combine those two data points. You can see the mask update was initiated on July the 2nd, and you can see how that's dropping. So we want to continue to see that downward trend on the Epi curve. It's not necessarily for just the long-range cases and just to get a snapshot view of what's happening with that. That's another good piece of, of data to look at. Number 20, slide 26 is, are the cases by city, because I think we talked about this last week. So these are all the, the cities where data is tracked in our county. And I'll only zero in on Hutto. So Hutto has had a total of 521 cases since they started tracking the data. Out of the 4, 521, 481 people have recovered, and right now there are 40 active cases. So that was on Thursday. The case count today is down to 37. So we just didn't have a chance to update it. So that one, that one is going down. Then the next slide, which I think is important, because sometimes I think we worry about kids coming to school and infecting others. This data shows that less than 7% of all the, all the COVID cases are among school-aged children. So it gives you the age breakdown. So from ages five to 10, it's a 1.6 infection rate. Your middle school kids are a 1.4. Your high school kids, obviously, they're a little more social, that's up to 3.7%. Now, I, I couldn't tell you of the 40 active cases that Hutto has right now, I couldn't tell you how many of those are actually school-aged. It's just, this is just aggregate data.
And that's data for the county, correct?
That's data for the county, yes. And obviously, data buys a code, you know, the, the city, these infection rates, correct? Yes. All right, so the next slide, just a reminder of where we are with our decision-making markers. So when we look at our countermeasures, we still have some work to do on PPE and making sure that we are full, that every classroom is fully stocked and that we have a fully stocked warehouse for replenishing. Our COVID cases in Williamson County, remember the goal is trending towards single digits. So the data from yesterday, I had that number, 22. Today, obviously, we saw it was up at 40, at 41. The percentage of ICU and general beds, that's at 77%, 86 respectively. And then COVID positivity rates, the goal is to hit 5% or trending in that direction. And that number is at 11.9. Today, it's at 11.3. The guidance from the local health authorities were in a red phase. And obviously, they, they do not recommend the in-person instruction. Mr. Gideon and Mrs. Estes are going to participate in a tabletop discussion with the Williamson County Health Authorities on Wednesday, the 26th. And so there'll be some more collaboration at that, at that point. So as far as our recommendation for tonight, this is what I would like to break forward. Based on the, those decision-making markers, I want to recommend that we extend virtual instruction by one week. We begin in-person instruction on Monday, September the 14th. Then we table the decision to extend virtual learning beyond four weeks, which is what is allowed by TEA. And then we'll continue to monitor our health conditions. I don't think they're horrible, but if you were to ask me today, Dr. Thomas, are you comfortable with moving forward with the current plan that we have? I, I would have to say no. I, I'd like, I would, I would pause, just because obviously you saw the data, it's not fully trending in the direction that we want it to go. And it, it's a week, but I think a week is a week. And I, I think the pros to having that additional week, obviously, it gives us additional time to look at that data, have our tabletop discussion with Williamson County. I think we get an important piece here is that we get beyond the next holiday week. Because obviously, if there's any new infections, we don't want those new infections attributed to the fact that we came back to school. All right, and it also gives people time, if they are, if they do start exhibiting symptoms and they misbehave, because it's really, you know, we've all said it, Kendra said it best, we all have to do our part, whether we're in school or it's a holiday, even as, as we gather, we have to make sure that we follow, that we do it safely. Doesn't mean don't, don't gather, but be safe and be wise about how you do that with your family and your friends. It does, it does give us that additional week for the PPE, the LARIS and restocking. It does give us that time to refine safety plans, just in reviewing the, the opening, the free response comments by staff on the survey. They, they do, they want more, they want more clarity on all of those procedures in this, in the safety plan. And they want a better understanding of what their responsibilities are in the classroom and how that's going to work. And obviously, I think in our conversation with principals yesterday as far as the training, you know, a lot of the, the training that we did in that first week coming back in August was all about, the, the focus was, let's get virtual instruction going, let's get trained up with what we need to do to roll out instruction. And yes, they covered the, the safety for the classroom, but since the kids aren't coming, that really wasn't at the, at the highest priority. So now that they've got virtual instruction running, I think in the next couple of weeks, they can start a training staff in small groups and really talking about, you know, what is safety going to look like in a, in a first grade wing, in a third grade wing? And, and what is all our part doing it? What's it going to look like in the high school? There's, at the middle school, there, we still have to refine our processes with how kids are going to eat lunch and how we're going to transition kids in the hallway and all of those pieces. And, and of course, it will give us additional time to hire and train our drivers for transportation.
But I think the key is the fact that we're just not there with data.
Yes, the key, I think the, the, the key here is going back to that, yeah, slide 24 on the Williamson County Health Data. And I want to stay true to what we said. From the very beginning, when we sent out the instructional safety plan to our teachers and our staff, we said that we would monitor the, the data. Now, at that time, we really, we would say, we said we were going to monitor the data, but we were really unclear what those goal markers were, because those goal markers were, they're, they're moving targets. But I think now we're staying true to that CDC recommendation that we're trending toward that, that 5% because that indicates that the safety precautions that we've instituted, not just in schools, but in the, at the public sector, it's really comes down to what's happening among us, that, yeah, we, we've got to get to those same points.
And 42% is going to stay virtual even after September 14th?
Right, and correct. For our parents listening, even on September the 14th, if you've selected virtual instruction, you will continue with the virtual instruction. Now, what may get a little confusing, I'm just in full disclosure, for middle school and high school, and Dr. Stromani will jump in if I say this incorrectly. TEA has said we must give parents the ability to make a choice before the, at every grading period. So in order for us to have lead time to make changes, we need to know if parents want to make a change at least two weeks before the grading period ends, which means the survey to ask them about it comes out before that two-week period. And I know it's going to confuse them. Now, we've already decided that that survey will not come out from the district. We want each campus to send out their, their surveys so that each campus can capture the data and, and keep track of who wants to make a change.
So can we put dates on it to say?
It does.
On this day, would you like to go back to?
Yeah. The la, the last parent update that went out, it had the dates, which, by when they had to make a decision. But I'm telling you what's going to confuse them is when that survey hits and they're saying, we haven't even gone back to in-person, you want me to make a change? Dr. Stromani was thinking about extending that first date instead of it being that Friday, September 4th. Well, and now it's, it's a whole point, because if we, if you accept my recommendation to just extend virtual learning by a week, the, those families will have no time to experience in-person, to, to determine whether they want to make a change or not. So that, I'll just, I just say that in full disclosure, that's the only thing that gives us concern right now is that we, there, we may have some confused folks out there. But that's the only way to do it, if, if we're going to make a change at the end of that first grading period.
Then when I say grading period, you mean semester or six weeks?
Yeah, or six weeks. So for high school, middle school, so first six weeks. Elementary, we still have some lead time, because they, there are nine weeks.
Well, yes, I have a, a comment, a question. So on slide 26, it says less than 7% of COVID cases are among school-aged children. But then if you add the next group, it's the age of our staff, and that's 70% of the COVID cases. So I think that that's really important for us to remember that we're here to serve not just our students, but also our staff. So I, for one, appreciate the fact that we're looking at that. And my question is this, if we, what are we doing right now? Because I keep hearing this, what are we doing to address social emotional learning for those kids right now, while we're all on virtual? Is, I don't know if there's something coming from Is, I don't know if there's something coming from the counseling. I know last year I heard some of that at the end of the year, but I don't know what we're doing right now.
I'm seeing lessons already being pushed out, social emotional learning lessons through the campus-based stages, at least out. Yeah, but that might be the only elementary I follow.
It also, you know, the term social emotional.
This is a thing that has to figure.
The term social emotional learning too depends on what you're visiting that most like. And I'm just going to throw out a spore of stuff just so you know what's going on. I know the counselors did a lot of work on the social emotional learning after we already knew we were going to an virtual. So I actually happened to be on the Zoom meeting when they were discussing how they were going to do this. So I know especially, it doesn't know, by the way. So I know especially elementary campuses have guidance lessons. They are going to be doing in-person online. I was not a part of the one of the secondary level, I do understand they also had that meeting to provide guidance. I had the, probably more of the year range. Just more recently, we've been, I've been a part of a series of conversations about our neediest families that we already have identified, know that the child has some social emotional issues of all kinds of differences. And there's a number of very individualized plans. Consider, we have one particular student working with the grandmother. That child will be in person by himself starting Monday because that is exactly what that child needs for a couple of weeks. And of course, it varies depending on the student you're looking at. The part of also I want to add is part of the reason for some of the synchronous learning that is taking place at this time was the feedback and the need for the kids to have that time to see each other, be a part of each other. Now, I don't want to pretend like it's universal where kids are getting an opportunity to work together in groups. In fact, I know we're using Google Hangout as our primary video platform. And that's a longer story, it's why we don't use Zoom. But Google Hangout is about to roll out their features, much like Zoom does, where they'll start being able to have the breakout sessions where a teacher can assign a group of students. And I believe that starts September 1st. They're a little slow into that game, but I prefer the firm protections of Zoom could offer us. And so that's why I'm doing that. So I'm hoping at that point, we'll be able to have an opportunity to have more of the very base classroom by classroom opportunity to have people working together. That's what I think you're asking about.
It is, and just an opportunity to have some interaction, like with something other than just their computer, like interaction with people there.
And our counselors have their case loads from last year. Now, unless the children graduated, the elementary and middle school, they know the children that they were serving that are high need. So I know there's plans underway to still connect with those children.
And something that I was made aware of this evening, and I had not thought about it, those children who are on, everybody's on, who are doing virtual lessons but don't have the capability to interact with those because they don't know how, they don't have some of the real pregratual skills. Like being able to read.
Yeah, there's a big range. The ones you obviously think of are the little ones, but that's certainly not the case. And so there are a couple of different approaches to that. And a lot of these are the lessons we learned in spring. One is providing parents, if you ever watched the videos that Kelly Hong at the Setty Orton and this voice played out, they're really meant for a person who's never used a Chromebook before and how to get through that. The other part is the parent support specialists and how they reached out and worked with parents to help them out. And then ultimately, they can help the student out there. Now, despite all that, there are still some that this just isn't going to work. In fact, before I walked over here, actually, the special education staff stopped me just to talk about that very issue with a parent and student both are not, it's not going to be feasible. For those, we're looking at trying to find, regardless of what we do here, contingency for those. Now, you may be aware, we do have some students, I think there are 30 or 32 students, I think. These are some of the students that have some of those profound needs and for whom, you know, this computer is just not going to happen. We are looking at slowly expanding that. We, next week, we'll add a few more that we know this just isn't working for them. And we're just slowly looking for ways to add that on there. One of the reasons to have the YMCA and the secondary campuses open, well, those are not teachers that are staffing that. I don't want to pretend anyone's going to get some one-on-one instruction there. Those are adults in the room who can at least help somebody with a computer. And the YMCA is working around our schedules, our virtual schedules to allow those kids to have instructional time with us, an adult who could at least work that. Not, maybe not instruction, but can at least help those students. So we're trying to put some of that stuff in place. I will tell you that, you know, also in response to one of the emails that came in, we, despite our information put out, we have been finding parents who didn't, we're not aware of these opportunities. And so we have been slowly working through those. And I could name all kinds of reasons why they didn't get the message. I know one grandparent who has custody of her child. She doesn't have custody of her child, but she does. But in the system, it's not reflected that way, so she never got any emails. And it can be reflected that way for legal reasons. Well, we came across that person and said, hey, did you know? And of course, you didn't know. So as we work through those, the principal, they're on case-by-case basis, trying to direct people in the right direction. But I know there are still people out there, but I guess if people are listening, that's the message, just if you call up here, we'll try to work a workaround for you. It's what we've been doing quite a bit of this week.
Perfect, thank you.
Would there be any value, and I know this is a challenge, but would there be any value in reopening that opportunity for families to select virtual instruction for those who have decided, I don't want to try in person once that starts? That would certainly help thin out the crowds on campuses. It's okay to say no.
Well, and I just said no, it sounds easier than it is. The principals just had a heart attack when you said that. And just to give you an example, Mr. Christian and I sat together for 45 minutes just figuring out one student's schedule together at the high school. It just didn't work, and the kid was going to be hurt because it didn't work. And I don't know that they still look excited. We came up with some creative ideas. But scheduling is really a challenge when kids keep changing what classes they have, which is why we have to have that cutoff point. And once we get things settled, and again, it's unsettled today because like I told you, I just rocked all the elementary principals' worlds by calling them and saying, yes, it's the call. Yes, the staff, he doesn't quite match up. We need to start moving things around and balance the classes out. So once again, you know, moving target, they can't settle with the teacher because we've got movement going. I do believe at some point, it's not going to be any time in the first six weeks, we're going to be settled enough where we can be more flexible. I think that's coming, but we're not there. Not by a long shot, not on the teacher's side, not central office, not for the principals right now.
So I was under the impression that, that you could only select virtual one time. So clearly, I misunderstood that. So at the grading period during those certain times, if I have selected in-person previously, I can choose to select virtual later?
Yes, okay, thank you. Yeah, you can go.
Every six weeks, right?
Okay, I thought it was only the other way.
Every period.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, you can go in both directions.
And I may be getting ahead of myself. What tools are we going to use to know who benefited with the learning experience for our kids online?
Actually, we are working on, well, let me start by saying the state has basically said that every tool that we told you, you have to use a regular instructor, you must use. So for example, elementary screeners, which is something that you probably don't hear a lot about whenever you're different set of data, they're required by state and they are all in full effect. Now, they led us to figure out how we're supposed to do that. Now, we're not ready to roll those out. Normally, we'd be pulling out the screeners next week. We're not going to. Teachers out there, if they got the message, it's okay, forget it, it's not going to work yet. But once we get the roster settled, then we're going to start doing that. Now, what I always tell people when looking at data like that, so I send a call parent up who's a first grade parent. I say, here's something, your child needs to read this. Would you please help me get the student doing it? I always have to keep in mind when I look at that data, knowing that is the conditions under which that assessment was given. And so the teacher's going to have to use a lot of their own insight in working with the child to know, was that assessment a good assessment of that child? So if you imagine that same thing happening PK through 12, that's what we're doing right now and trying to measure whether we're progress about. So I like, I think the best way to say it is our data is going to be fuzzy. It's about the call.
So when we go back to in-person learning right now, schedule of 14th, I know that school is going to be at like 58% occupied, but what about the classrooms themselves? Because you, you're still splitting your teachers' virtual. I mean, is the classroom still going to be the same size?
Yes, and therein lies part of the challenge and why we really need to to work with our principals and work with our staff about, because that is a concern. It was in the, in the survey, rightfully so. So I'm having, I don't, I can't envision how social distancing is going to work in a class of 25 or a class of 28. Because yes, whether you're in-person or virtual, as a matter of fact, our virtual sizes are much larger than the in-person. We did that deliberately so that when kids do come back, there's fewer. So our virtual teachers are carrying much larger loads. But those are all logistical things that we're going to have to work through. We are going to have some classes where the social distancing is not going to be possible. So what's going to happen is we've got, we've got two choices really. You're going to have to stay for that 45 minutes, 50 minutes. You're going to have to stay masked up. You cannot move. Or if there is a way, we're going to have some empty classrooms. If there is a way to split up the kids, you know, you leave 20 in one room, move 10 to another room and leave the doors open. The teacher can go back and forth, you know. But depending on how you split up the kids, you may, we're going to have to use space creatively in that way.
And if you have a classroom that that social distancing doesn't appear to be possible, do we have, and Henry, I think this is sort of geared toward you. Do we have the Plexiglas? Because I believe I heard you say we had something.
Yeah, there are 400 units that are being purchased for special types of applications. So for example, dyslexia pull-out, that teacher will have Plexiglas, three-quarter shields, depending on what the principal's requested in those applications. And there's three or four different versions. There's some that have a little hole in the bottom, if you will. I know without the viewers can't see what I'm describing, where like a man teller slots, they can slide paper back and forth. Some are just simple, steam star types of things that allow the teacher to engage the students so that there's some safety. And then there's some smaller versions in some smaller applications. What we bought for the cafeterias are plastic versions, not Plexiglas. They're a little bit flimsier. But we figured they would wear better in the cafeterias if the teachers or if the staff want to use those in applications during the meal service time. So each elementary campus, for example, we get 200 of those to spread out in the cafeteria. And we may have to look at more options. I think there are some teachers too that are using the little cardboard testing devices in certain applications to spread things out, so.
And even, and I've seen, as I'm sure, the PVC pipes and the clear shower curtains, like sort of.
Yeah, Dr. Kerth actually experimented in her shop and built some prototypes that she's actually going to work into some programming with the 18-plus program. So we may actually do some custom type applications. You know, there's no one size fits all. The spaces are all unique and the needs of the teachers and the kiddos are all unique.
Yeah, one of the teachers at Howard Norman made her own with orange PVC pipe. I don't know where she found it, but she had some cute ones that she made for her classroom. I don't remember what classroom it was. I'm sorry, she had to spend the money to do that. But that was hers, her variation, yeah. Now, those, how many, those 1,600 plastic dividers that we bought for the cafeteria, that came in at what, $40,000?
Oh, yeah, we're just over $47,000 for all of that with that described.
Now, we can, now, those haven't arrived.
The decision, it's the application, does that make sense? Or does it make sense, and I don't know. Do we, for certain classes, require you distance as you, as you're able to and you wear your masks? You know, I don't know what that answer is.
And are we looking at or considering a mandatory mask rule for students when they return to school?
Not for 10 and under, not for 10 and under, because under the governor's order. Now, obviously, as a district, we can, we can do that.
We have a mandate, which is while you're in motion, you have to have your mask on. When you ride a school bus, you have to have your mask on.
I'm talking about a classroom that has 25 kids.
Oh, yes, yes. If you cannot, if you cannot safely distance yourself, you will have to wear your mask.
If you can do the six-foot, you don't have to.
Right, if you can, if you can separate, you can remove the mask, kind of like we're doing now. Right, but as soon as we go in motion, your mask comes on.
So we've taken that decision, I just want to make sure I'm right. We've taken that decision away and not left that up to the discretion of the campus administrator to say, you can choose as a teacher to have your students have masks or not. If this is a condition, they will.
Correct, yes. Now, however, we did give the teacher authority to have the kids wear their mask if that teacher is going to pull the children up close or if she's going to work with children to, so require kids to be in groups. Yes, that the teacher has that authority to have the kids wear their masks, yes.
But only 11 and up or all?
For all kids, all kids, yes. Even, even the little ones, if you're going to bring them together, you can ask them to wear their masks, yes.
I can just see a scenario of a billionaire teaching next to each other. And I'm saying, you must wear your mask. And they go to Ms. Billy and she's kind to her and she says, okay, take it off. Then they come to me and they're angry, so that, that.
Right, and again, that was one of the concerns on the staff survey. They were writing out their colleagues, it's like, here we are for PD and I'm concerned already that the staff or my own colleagues are not adhering to the mask rule. And if they can't adhere to the mask rule during PD, what's it going to be like when we go into classrooms? So that's, that's part of that, that, that training and that messaging that we have to reinforce, right? The rule is, you cannot maintain distance, you must have your mask on.
Perfect, and you've clarified the patient.
And what is the remedication if a kid decides not to wear a mask because my dad said I may have to?
Then that child will have to select virtual learning.
And that was put out there at the beginning, right?
Yeah, that was put out there at the beginning. Now, that's a last resort. Obviously, here's what we need to appeal to that sense of safety and that solidarity. If we're choosing to come to in-person instruction, we must, this is part of my ministry with the parent Zoom meetings, right? We all have to do this together.
I just don't want a home people incident, so.
What does that mean?
Just, you know, someone going to home people inside and not to wear a mask and they're required to wear a mask, and they may think about it.
I want to tell you that the assistant principals and principals and all of us about together had a long conversation so that we could role-play a little bit about how that's going to be. I fully expect the challenge to be on in that regard. I'll say with adults, we're not going to have much, we're not going to operate for it. You come on, you've got a mask on, you people. But the kids, those are kids. So we're treated like that. We're not going to give them a power struggle, but no, we're not going to let a child sit without a mask inside the classroom where the teacher can't get a six-foot distance. We'll take care of that. But we've got, I don't want to reveal all our tricks, but we've got a few tricks in the trade. We plan on probably, when we need to. And hopefully, we're hoping that we jump on that really early with you. I think that we'll be okay after that.
Any other questions, Edgar? Did you have anything?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, so we have two options here, correct?
Yes.
We have two, two motion options. One is to table this item 6A to give permission to extend virtual learning. Or option two is to approve extending the virtual learning beyond September 14th. Or option two is to approve extending the virtual learning beyond September fourteenth, should health conditions not allow for a safe return. So we've got a decision to make because we have the authority to extend, or to give the superintendent the authority to extend for four additional weeks beyond September fourteenth, so we can have discussion about that.
So the two options are to give her authority to go all the way to the four weeks, or to just grant the?
The two options are to table this for now. She is extending, her recommendation tonight is to extend until September fourteen.
Okay.
Which she already had the authority to do that.
Okay, I got you.
So, so we can table giving her the authority for four additional weeks tonight. And we can reconsider that based on the health, you know, conditions and stuff. We can reconsider that as we go, but for tonight, we can table that. Or we can go ahead and give her that authority tonight. So if somebody wants to make one of those motions, we can entertain that.
I'll make a motion to table the decision.
Motion to table on this item six eight, made by Terrence, is there a second?
I can.
Second by Mr. Bellwell.
So this just says, you're going to September fourteenth, we'll address it after that later. Is basically what we're saying. If we want to extend it further, we'll come together again and do that.
Yes.
And we're meeting next week too, is this an agenda item?
I can, well, yes, remember, we said that we were going to put the safety instructional plan on every agenda item.
Okay, so I mean, if we, you know, if something just goes crazy, we can say, look, it's going to be the four, four weeks or whatever.
Right.
We can, we can.
Have this discussion for sure again next week.
Okay.
Billy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas, or Henry, or Kendra, do we feel like tabling this and not giving you the permission right at the moment impedes in any way any of the planning that you would be able to, that you would need to engage in if and when conditions change one way or the other? Does it all impede that?
No, not at all. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I think it, just because we're coming together next week and gives us another opportunity to look at where we are in that given week.
Got you, okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, yes, my question is, if we were to wait until next week, for example, that only gives families a weekend, a few days to prepare to pivot, is that correct?
But I wouldn't, we wouldn't.
No, because we're still going to September fourteenth.
Right.
This is just beyond the.
Okay, I just need to look at a calendar like that.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. So next week's, our meeting's on the twenty-seventh, and then you have the week of the third, the tenth.
Right. So really, we go in two-week increments. If anything, we'll know next week, if the data is not trending in the right direction, then I would ask, then I would ask you to grant me that authority. And then we would probably, another discussion, Dr. Sermon, I haven't talked to the entire BLT, but Dr. Sermon and I have talked about maybe just going full virtual the first grading period, the first six weeks. It doesn't cover the elementary, but it would cover at least the secondary. So that's, that's another option to consider if we need to. I think right now, I really want, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we've got fifty-eight percent of the kids wanting in-person instruction. Our families need to have the children in, in school. I think it is, there is a huge hardship on our families right now with not having kids in school. There's also the, the social emotional need that Connie was alluding to. We haven't seen our kids in five months. And, and yes, we can talk about how successful and how smooth virtual instruction has been, but it is not of a priority. It is not the same as face-to-face our children to be in our schools.
Rest, rest.
Right, and let me be clear on, on something, just to avoid confusion. We are, Hadois D will be going virtual until September fourteenth as of today.
Right, or until that Friday, we would start, so we were scheduled to start in-person on Tuesday, September the eighth. So we would stay virtual until Friday, September eleventh.
To four more days.
Four more days, so we're extending virtual instruction by four days, so we've got Labor Day.
Okay.
And so right now, we would start in-person instruction on Monday, the fourteenth. Right, now, we, in, in the background, we're also going to be, as we monitor the data, if it's not trending in the right direction, we may come back to you and with, with something creative about how we get at least a portion of the kids back. So it throws off our plan, Dr. Sermon and I talked about it, it all has to do with ADA, how we capture that. But I think in light of safety, safety, we do have to talk about how, how do we start getting our, if we can't get them all back, we need to start talking about how do we start bringing them in.
And so we meet again for a regular scheduled meeting next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, where we will have another update, because we said we do that every meeting, and the most current data for the next week.
Could we take action to, I mean, could there be a recommended action to?
There could be.
Okay.
And if not, we, we say we're going to stay the course, if there are some of our plans for bringing the children back.
And I think that's a smart thing, right? While this is ever-changing like this, is that maybe we just keep, you know, if we can't do a four meeting, we do one like this and say, you know, that way we kind of keep, or, you know, with the authority there. I think everybody will stay here when you make that decision, you know.
Well, and we're, we're transparent, you've seen the data we're talking about. A big piece also for me is making sure that our, our teachers have that supply. That's been a huge outcry in the, in the survey, we can see it already. We want to make sure they have what they need. If our classrooms don't have what they need, then we're not ready to receive children and staff back together. We've got to make sure that that's rock solid.
I guess my, my question is, the, the way the motion reads, not the tabling, but the, the second one is, should the health conditions not allow for the safe return of staff and students in-person learning? So essentially, what we're saying is, if, if we're tabling something in, in the anticipation that we may go ahead and approve it down the road anyway, it doesn't mean that if we approve it tonight, that we're going to do it. It just gives the superintendent the authority to execute that. Why would we not go ahead and just grant the authority? If we know, if we know that that needs to be an option down the road, should we just consider granting the authority? And I know we have a motion on the table. I'm just trying to, in my own mind, can understand the difference between the two motions. I'm not sure what we're doing by tabling, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing by tabling that we're not also accomplishing by granting authority tonight.
Well, to me, it means we'll get back together and everybody can listen to the decision to make it go further out. You know, instead of just Dr. Thomas just extending it. It means we will have to get together and everybody will be able to listen to that discussion again.
And I think the other important piece, Mr. Brady, for our, for our families who really want to have their kids back in school, it also gives them the assurance that, all right, she can't, the school district cannot just extend virtual learning. We've got to have a formality to make, to make that happen. I, I think it just adds that layer of confidence to our, to our families, that we are coming together and making this decision. Not that I can't do it, or that my team and I can't do it. This is just too important not to convene in and just bring that, that sense of confidence. All right, this is what our, our data says, and this is what, this is what we have in place to make it happen. And then we're just kind of checking off the boxes, so I'm, I'm good.
Should we then amend the motion to read the next time we will take this back up again? No?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be on agenda, we said every single time we meet, we will have an update. Okay, we have a motion to table this item six eight, and a second by Mr. Bellwell, so all in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
Good.
And our next.
Question or comment? If we're going to be open on September fourteenth, do we need to sign the campuses?
We can. Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Make a motion, Richard.
Motion made by Mr. Bellwell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Owen, all in favor, good journey. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thanks, everyone, have a good weekend.
Thank you too. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, appreciate you.